Did, so I was, I've seen, I've seen that several things outside that alley behind Delaware. On to the, they have a.
They didn't get a permit because they can't be in the alley and they can't park that trailer right there, so I don't know what they did. As long as they're not in the alley, we don't care.
Yeah, cause I always see them show up on all the schools.
Good curtain.
They should definitely not be in the alley, probably know if they are, because they told me they don't have to be in the alley for equipment. It's just drive that before.
Lori.
Good seeing you. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Thank you, Tracy. Okay. You're welcome. Hi, Tracy, good to see you. Glad to have you here, hope it's good.
Yeah, I think Donna and I talked about putting me somewhere around here, just can all be a regular. You'll see, and you'll be learning. I think she searched you out. I know, so. I, I heard, I first listened to your, you said it. That's great.
Tom. Tom is our street department supervisor.
That's why you can get us right.
I'm scared, how are you?
It was nice to meet you.
Hi Dana, hi Tracy.
Hi.
Have what? Yes, yeah, we do. Oh, really? Do you have the, the code? No, you have to, even, even on the cities, even the guest website has to have a code.
Do you have a, a turn bar? I have a turn bar.
Yeah, C O L guest. Okay. I don't remember. Uh, Lauren, do you have the code for Wi-Fi?
I do, right?
She'll, she'll get it to you.
Oh, thank you. If you could look right here, it's, I have it stuck on a sticky. It's not, it's, because it's like.
Hey Cisco.
How are you?
Running hard, put up wet.
What's the mask etiquette these days, just optional?
What's that?
Mask etiquette these days. I know the schools are going mask free tomorrow.
Were they really?
Well, optional, I don't know.
The county and city removes the mask every day. Yes.
Hey. What does that mean?
You know, we have to make sure we have a, a provocation. Right before Sam. Well, I, I've got copies.
Yay. Hey, good to see you. Welcome more officially, yeah.
Good to see you. Do you want one of these?
I do. I need to, I need to know where I can find you.
If you can't find her when you need her, good to see her.
This looks good.
Yeah, this is good.
Yeah.
Yeah, Donna provided it up for me.
Thank you very much.
And, you know, business cards are kind of old things, or, uh, yes.
I love them, I know, right?
Is this gonna be the, on your, the cellphone, your city cellphone?
Don't forget on the other, because I don't actually have a phone, but I. But, the email works.
Okay, so, we've got Max.
I don't know, but I'll give it to him.
So we're seeing a Christian. Thanks Kurt, thanks for coming. Oh yeah.
Yeah, it looks like Max is on.
Yeah. We got a few more minutes, so.
My daughter has been stopped down at Copper Mountain.
Oh.
There's a wreck by Officer Gold.
It's closed.
And she's in between the stoplight and Copper and the free, and the free parking, so she's in that thing where there's a median and there's a guardrail and she's just been stopped.
Traffic has been streaming through town, because they're sitting on Highway twenty-four to two eighty-five.
That's what's up?
Yeah.
But there's an accident?
And then she's just been like, oh, I have so much homework to do.
What a disaster.
What happened on I seventy?
It was a crash.
It was a crash. You could actually see it on the C dot cameras there for a little while. Yeah, it looked like somebody like rolled off the, off the right side and there were the vehicles that were kind of fouled up. It's all cleared up now, so I'm happy with it soon, but she's like, I've moved less than thirty feet in two and a half hours.
Christian mentioned last meeting he was gonna miss one, is this, is this that one?
It may be, we were, yeah, we'll see if he, if he gets here, but you're, you're right, I just, I don't think I wrote it down.
You're great, that's all.
I don't truly eat there, but stuff. I only had like half slices of pizza.
I wouldn't eat pizza. Nothing.
It's good, I got a slice of pizza. That's okay, is that enough?
I just had a, oh, no. I had a bunch of nuts, and I'm actually good for pressure. All right, Jonathan's six. Mayor, what do you think? What's, what's that for tonight? I would have, how, how long?
Six forty-five.
I'll take that one.
I'll take it.
I, I'm wrong every single time.
That on whether it's right or wrong.
Exactly. That was six forty-five.
Me neither. You guys are fine.
Noel, who's third, huh Dana?
She's gone full club. I never thought I would see the day that she would skip state, because as far as even December, she was like, no way. Definitely not, but. They did a really stupid thing this year, they put the last two club races right after state, so before there's a racing.
Nah, that's.
So, yeah, especially not. So instead we got high anxiety for this weekend.
We missed.
Is Violet totally psyched?
What's that?
Is Violet psyched? She did really well on the race this last week.
Yeah, she's gone. Be, yeah.
So you got state and, and club finals this weekend?
Well, the club, the club angle's towards junior nationals and the high school races angle towards state.
Okay.
So she's been doing both sets of races, but. I don't know.
Violet is pretty consistently.
We'll see.
Christian said she'll make it.
Oh, really?
She's pretty consistently like, just outside the club.
We'll give it about one more minute and we'll go get started.
Violet.
Yeah, you know, she's just getting started.
Yeah, plus she's doing, she's doing stuff for the play too, so she's got a full plate.
Yeah, we were talking about, because she was at, at Brett's birthday party.
Do they still have rehearsals until O D R thirty?
Uh, they haven't been that long lately, but as it gets closer, I'm sure it'll be.
That is a lot.
A mess, yeah.
She was saying that, that, that the stage, you know, paperwork was eight pages long, but Brett said. Pages? I didn't even see that.
Going on.
Okay, we're gonna get started. It is six oh two, and we call the city council meeting of February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two to order at six oh two. Roll call, please.
Council member Loretson.
Here.
Council member Hill.
Present.
Mayor Lavey.
Here.
Council member Luna Leo.
We're expecting him to be here, but he's not here quite yet.
Mayor Proton Green.
Here.
Council member Fregancy.
Present.
Council member Thar.
Present.
Excellent, uh, we're gonna go ahead and start without, without Christian, but when he gets here, we'll, welcome him. Uh, at this time, I would ask for approval of the agenda. Is there anything on this agenda we would like to change, other than doing away with the police department report?
We're up some, some moved. Ten seconds.
Is there any other discussion? Here we've done all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, all are in favor. Uh, housekeeping matters, anybody have anything they'd like to bring up before we get started?
Notice the, uh, EV charger is up and working?
It is, we still have a couple more steps to complete, uh, what, uh, Charger at Colorado needs. Uh, we need to provide them with connectivity, so they can be accumulating data. Uh, and then we need to, to, uh, schedule some sort of ribbon cutting. Uh, but, but yes, it's working right now.
So you can charge your car on it right now?
Yes.
Okay. A little late, but better late than never.
It only took us, what did it take us to, it's ten minutes. Well, from the time we have the site to installation, so that was, uh. And it's been a year and a half since the grant. Yeah, so, alright. Uh, I have a couple things real quick. Uh, we have a contingent of Irish from Alahis, our, our, our township that we, we did twenty with. Are coming, uh, March, uh, they'll be here the evening of, of March the nineteenth, and they'll be here during the day, March the twentieth. Um, I would like to ask city council if they would consider, uh, providing them with rooms and meals during that very brief visit.
A very warm and generous thing to do.
I thought so. Any thoughts?
Would that come out of the contingency?
Yes. You're keeping track, right? We still have thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, alright, uh, I would love to be able to do that for them. Um, uh, we, we're trying to put some players.
Sorry to interrupt, what kind of total, you think that might be?
Couple thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah. Seems fine, I think, I think we should aim for consistency in the future if, if another group of similar, uh. Sort of prominence that we want to host.
Okay. Uh, we're, we're trying to put together a plan, the Irish Committee met, uh, the local committee met and is working on, on kind of a, an agenda for them during that day. Um, and, and, uh, probably going out to the memorial. Uh, since three of the four of them are from the, the, uh, the copper mine museum in Alahis. Uh, we're gonna take them over to the mining museum and Steve Whittington's, we'd be glad to host them. Um, we do, we thought about putting off the Saint Patrick's Day, uh, this actual Saint Patrick's Day parade. Uh, but we talked about that in terms of logistics and who could and could not participate in the, in the various timeframes, we decided to leave alone, it's gonna be on the seventeenth. Thursday the seventeenth at four thirty. Uh, but I'm looking forward to their visit. And that's quite a. A commitment on their part to come here. Uh, real quick, the ARPA final rule is out. Uh, for the treasury department, I've, I've looked through it, it would appear, and talked to other people, that we've talked about whether or not we could use that. You can use it for housing, but whether or not we could use it for land acquisition was a question, it appears that we can. I'll make sure to confirm that before we spend any money on land. Uh, but that's, that's a strong possibility.
That's great.
Um, and the last thing I'll say in housekeeping is the Leadville Lope is this Saturday. Um, it's a, a, a Berkey qualifier and they say, um, entries are, are down this year, which doesn't surprise me at all. And they're not having, uh, the inside in the, in the, uh. Gymnasium where they have all the suits, they're not gonna do that this year, so that's unfortunate, but, uh. Especially because I'm gonna be announcing and I'm gonna be outside for about a zillion hours.
Pretty nice.
Huh? God, I hope so. Okay, any other housekeeping matters?
Any applicants in for the housing director role yet?
We have four applicants, we interviewed four, uh, this last Friday. Uh, we brought one applicant forward, uh, the county commissioners, uh, interviewed that applicant yesterday. Uh, and they're in the midst of making the decision whether or not they think that applicant is the right applicant, so, uh, that's where we are. Commissioner Marge, any, any, uh, comment on that?
I'm here. Um, we actually, uh, interviewed, uh, two, the top two, the board did, so, um. Yeah, we should, um, be coming around to that decision, um, tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Posted.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
That's great, thanks Sarah.
Um, at this time, uh, we would ask if there's anybody in the public who would like to make comments on items on the agenda. I believe the commissioner Marge would like to, to talk to us, um, so we're, you're gonna go first, Sarah.
Okay, sorry, and I regret not being there with you guys in person, um, I'm about to go into Lake County Conservation District meeting here up at C M C. Um, um, I am just coming to ask and remind us all with our busy schedules, um, it'd be great, I think if we all could schedule a work session together, city and county. Um, as we move ever closer to, um, justice center work and, um, we would love to talk about some cost sharing with the city. And or get, uh, council on board or up to speed, I should say, with, um. With, um, uh, where, where we're at in planning, um, and some of those costs, um, some of the other things that we'd like to. Start exploring in conversation are, uh, well, and get some, some, um, decisions from the city on the renovation of the holding cells. Um, any contribution, um, talk about any plan or ideas for dispatch. Um, either, you know, moving out as its own entity, um, how that worked with communications and the emergency services council. Um, so let's see, those three things are big ticket items. Um, the other really exciting thing, I, I sent, um, the mayor and Lori, both Lories. Uh, uh, the application that was submitted this morning for the exciting co-swap, um, opportunity by the state, D N R. Um, which is a, a grant fund, a grant opportunity for fuel mitigation for wildfire. Um, treatment on the ground, the grant is for crew time and getting crews in, Department of Corrections crews who are experienced and. Have to go through a lot of training, um, to be eligible to participate in this program. And so we've submitted that for twenty-five weeks of work from them, and the super exciting thing is that we have C M C and Newmont at the table. Um, with the county and just those three landowners alone, hitting upwards of four thousand acres. Um, and that's four thousand out of approximately sixty-one hundred that are other priority identified acres. Other than Forest Service or B L M and federal lands, so, um, with, it, it's usually really hard to get permissions. And chip away at the actual acreage, but, um, our first project that we have identified is right outside the Wui, in the city of Leadville. Or right outside the city of Leadville, in the wildland urban interface, um, around C M C property and then community field. Um, so that'll be a great starting point, that'll provide a break and it'll also be a really high profile area. With as much activity goes on there, um, to really kind of engage the community and do that outreach and education and. Uh, control and, and promote that conversation and that message about what the, the, the following plans might be. Um, for continuing. for continuing fuel mitigation work. So also wondering if the city wants to learn more and contribute there for any funds. This first project, the project management is about forty eight thousand dollars. And Newmont and CMC are are going to commit something as well, but at the end of their fiscal year, which for CMC ends mid-year calendar year, they're not sure what that looks like yet. But I hope that they can share that mapping with you and I am happy to answer any questions now or another time and 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 share more about what plans might look like.
Does anybody have any questions for the commissioner? I do, of course. When when is the, is the work being contracted out for the holding cells yet?
That is a good question. No, I don't believe so, Mayor. I know we we finalized project management with Colleen Caneda on that portion and on the Justice Center. So she's got those two projects under her company's purview. And actually, Chris is on here. She could correct me if I am wrong. Or or give us a better update. I'm not quite sure what the status is.
Yeah, this is Chris. I was just going to chime in and say that I I know Colleen has the contracts for the the construction company that's going to do the work. And and I think they're under review. I haven't heard anything back in the last week or so as to the status, but they're definitely in process.
Thank you, Chris. Last I heard, that was going to be about a two hundred thousand dollar project. Is that still what we think?
I I think so. My, yeah, one hundred and eighty nine to two hundred. I don't know. I can't recall actually how old those numbers are now. So as we all know, urgency and time. That might have changed, but I would, that's what we're counting on.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think that's that's the right ballpark, at least that we've been playing in.
Alright, thank you. Max, you got a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and please forgive me. I'm home in isolation, so I am unable to make it, feeling not so hot. That said, grateful I'm able to join and feeling up to that. Do you have a question for the commissioner? Commissioner, what's the total cost of that wildland fire mitigation project right now? That you're looking at the total dollar amount and how many acres would that?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The total.
I'm sorry.
The, right now, the total, the project management and administration, which would be through the Arkansas River Watershed Collaborative and the Roundtable and in partnership with the Colorado Forest Service, is forty eight thousand dollars. There's a burn budget as well, and that's a little more of a moving target right now as we, it was a quick outlay of the grant application and a quick turnaround and it is a rolling grant and we can apply anytime. And so CMC is working to incorporate some of the pile burns and or we are waiting to see whether the county is going to purchase an air burner. But the state is really concerned with what we're going to do with the with the material and and slash. So that that budget is about seventy six and the total, the total project was what, one twenty three? Does that sound like about right math? I'm sorry, it's not in front of me. I did send it. And the the acreage that the crews, we think the crews can cover, we're hopeful that they'll cover about three hundred acres. But we submitted for two hundred and to let them, but we have them for the weeks. And so if they move faster, we're going to let them keep going because in those areas, we have a few thousand acres. Is that answered?
One, one last quick question, I hope. When were you thinking in terms of of having a joint BOCC city council work session to kind of catch up on everything? What, did you have a thought around when you might want to do that?
No, I really don't. I was gonna, I've been meaning to check in with Chris and Katie on what information we have to possibly propose on some of the Justice Center items. So maybe, I don't know, three, two, three weeks out. But let's, I mean, happy to do coordination offline.
Just just let us know when you guys think you're ready. Any other questions for the commissioner? Thank you very much, Sarah.
Thanks. Me. Have a good night.
Do we have anybody else in the public who would like to speak on items on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes from February first.
The change.
Go ahead.
Under the Mineral Belt Mayhem temporary use permit. Councilmember Leo moved to approve the temporary use permit for Nordic knockout sprints. That needs to be changed, the Mineral Belt Mayhem.
Any other changes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion, please.
Councilmember Thar moves to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, February first, twenty twenty two.
Hold on a second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. Next up, we start with the police department report. That's not fair.
We have three new CSO start in January. They've been focusing on towing vehicles, unregistered plates. We had, one of them's Megan Barnett, the animal control officer. She's been cracking down on those, on the loose dogs. They just got their fifth ticket today.
Did they really?
Yeah.
Plus, they didn't show up for court, did they?
No, she tried coming to pay her ticket the day after court and I wouldn't let her. And Martin and Purzelt started the academy on the fifteenth. I think that's it.
Can I just say, I really like this. This is so much easier to get a just a general sense of what's going on. Oh, thank you for that.
Could you explain it?
Didn't we have this discussion earlier?
Never mind. That was the the look of death. Yeah, sorry. Any questions for the police department? I didn't want to mention, I'm sorry, Chris.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Shannon. The four openings, are any of those for CSOs or are those all for certified officers?
We've got quite a few applications in. How's doing oral boards and testing this weekend for two others? And I think we have two others that have completed their psych exam and physicals. So we may have four going to the academy in May. And so then Porzelt and Martin will come out in April and go through FTO until August. And so I think, once he hires, will be full, possibly a waiting list.
And so we would have potentially as many as seven post-certified officers on the street and three, maybe four CSOs. And so he and I have talked about the possibility of maybe over hiring by one or two in the second half of the year because it can't hurt our budget. We've got, you know, you know, we're not spending money on personnel so far, but that's that's where we are right now. It looks.
Our pay slow doubled from December to January.
Did it really?
Exactly.
We still only have two post-certified officers, so that's the reality. It's a slow burn. So but I think Hal's doing all the right things and it looks good for the future. All the people he's he's working with are local. They all live here.
It's no small feat.
No, it's not.
Are these a total calls over for January?
I wanted to mention, you know, they have the best of Leadville. We have two, two police department personnel. What's that?
That's February.
What's February?
That's in my February month of the meeting.
A little shut up. I'm not going to ruin it.
Don't ruin it.
Never mind. At the scare of death again. Alright.
Have you considered with with how having CSOs do personal outreach to folks with private parking signs, just as a heads up on the side removal?
We haven't gone there. You know, that's an April thirtieth deadline, but I think it's it's probably a very good idea. We are going to send out letters to all of those people, but sometimes that's doesn't work the way you hope it would.
Yeah.
So maybe your personal contact would be a good idea. Thank you.
I don't know if it's the best use of their time, but it certainly seems like it.
It seems like a really good use of their time.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the police department? Next up, fire department. Chief Daly, you're up.
Thanks, Mayor. Hey, good evening, everybody. Sorry I couldn't be there. I got my little one here. So thanks for the accommodation of of Zoom. So we've got a lot of exciting things happening. We hired our fourth just recently. That's historic for the organization. So now we do have four on the engine company after a hundred and eighty day waiting period for the requirement of the grant itself and our extensive hiring process. So we have finally done that and it's it's been great. We just started that actually two shifts ago. So we have a department meeting on Thursday up at CMC in room four oh one of the Climax Building, starting at nine AM. If anybody would like to attend that, we are, we're actually going to do some team building exercises as well. So it's just not a, just a boring meeting. We're going to actually do some activities and get the blood flowing also. So it should be a fun time with the entire organization. That's to include twenty five personnel. That's our career staff, our resident reserves and our cadets from from the high school. We lost one cadet from the high school and then we had another one coming to the organization right away. So and and that's an additional senior. So and that's why I just want to say, Hostel Diaz is doing a really great job. He's a senior and he's doing his EMT course. He's on duty today. He was working with the paramedic on his medical skills. So having that firsthand connection with being able to work with a paramedic is going to make him excel in his class and he's going to do very well, I believe. So, let's see, so we talked about that. Chief McCann and I, the operations chief, we met with Jeremiah from CMC. Jeremiah's new in his position. He's taken over Claire's position, which is Claire used to take care of the FST program, the Fire Science Training Technology Program. So we wanted to be able to meet with him and kind of see and just talk about everything in the past and the future and how we'd like to be able to see the program grow in a very positive and wonderful fashion. So a lot of good came out of that conversation about how Chief McCann's connection with the fire academies, taking care of the logistics and also working on associate's degree classes further because right now currently we have all of the associate's degree classes laid out, but currently, right now, the college can't meet about three of those courses. And so we're going to try to expand it to make sure that we have the 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 entire ASS program, AAS program here locally at the Timberline Campus. Excuse me.
Chief, can I ask you a question real quick?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor.
Jeremiah moved over to CMC. Who who filled his position in the ambulance service?
Oh, no, not that Jeremiah. Jeremiah. No, Jonathan was with the Office of Emergency Management. This is, this is a different Jeremiah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So we're still waiting on notice for two grants, an AFG grant, fifty thousand for the PPE and fire and safety and disease, these disease prevention for the extractor. Hopefully, we'll be able to hear that here back on those grants in the next few months. It, under the internship reserve program right now, you know, it it used to fill the fourth seat. Now we're trying to fill the fifth and sixth because, you know, eventually we're going to have two responding stations. And like I said, we're ju, we're just bringing on new residents and reserves. So now we have three new residents and five new reserves. So these are very new people to the program. And six of them are out of this last fire academy. And and two of them, one, one of them's from Buena Vista. They they were in, that gentleman was in their resident program. He came to test for us for our career positions. He decided to move to our organization for our residency program. And then Kane Gibson is going to come back to us. He was a part of our wildland program for a very long time. And now he wants to stay, take the all hazard course. So right now, our numbers, we've had a lot of change with personnel and all across the board are it's not that we have new people here, but we have a lot of new people in their new positions because of of, we lost a lot of veterans at the top in the organization and we've kind of bumped them and got them up to where they needed to be in their professional development to fill those higher seats. And now we've got and then all the firefighter seats have been filled with our residents and reserves, which is kind of nice because we've just plugged them into the system. We've been able to train them for the past year or two to be able to do that. Lot of inspections going on with Chief Boyle. He had eleven this last month. And he sent letters out to the local businesses and this is a, this is a new task that the fire department's doing. And he sent letters out to do annual inspections for the buildings and he received twelve responses back from from our commercial buildings so that he can go out and do proper inspections for them. So I thought that was I thought that was really good for the organization. There's one more thing that I'd like to be able to discuss and that's a little more, oh, one more thing. I'm sorry, the Rotary Club, the Buena Vista Rotary Club. They got enough funding for thirteen car seats to continue our car seat technician program. And that's to prevent childhood trauma and get car seats out to our public to be able to put infants in car seats and children in car seats. So that was very wonderful. I wanted to be able to mention that. One more thing, I I did talk to Andy Lurch as well, kind of piggybacking on what the commissioner said about it. One of the things that we will do as an organization, we did talk about those burn piles. And when the time comes, after all of that, well, a couple of things, when they do the project on County Road Four, we'll get involved there by doing some S two twelve training, that's some chainsaw training prior to them getting in there with contract companies. And then once the the work is done on the hundred or two hundred acres, however, however much they get done, we'll help them burn those piles with our wildland team and also be able to collect a lot of the firewood, etc., to go down to station two because that will have two wood stoves down at that station. So we're going to just kind of help with that process as it as it kind of unfolds. So that that's about all I have for this evening, unless you want to talk about statistics. But.
Anybody have any questions for Chief Daly? I do, of course. I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, Max, go ahead. Oh, Max, go ahead.
Now, thanks for the, thanks for your uh, report, Chief Daly. Uh, did, in that conversation with uh, Jeremiah, uh, did that discussion bring up that CMC is looking to put on an S two twelve class this spring, early summer?
Uh, no, two twelve didn't come up, but one thirty, one ninety did.
Okay.
I will, but I'll talk with uh, Chief McCann, because do you guys do that together, or would you like to do that together?
That's the plan. Um, he, he, he hasn't responded to a, a calendar invite uh, that, well, it's through a CMC email, I don't know how much he checks that one, but uh, we have a, a, a meeting with Jeremiah on the seventeenth uh, on a Zoom call.
Uh, seventeenth?
Or, yeah, this Thursday.
This Thursday, uh, that's our department meeting. What time is that?
I think it's two PM, I can take a look and get back to you, I can send you a text. Um, and I'll also send that to Chief McCann, um, uh, Mr. McCann, sorry. You know, Dave's personal email.
Yeah, the, the uh, Leadville Fire one is the one that he checks. Until he has, until he has to check the CMC one.
Okay, and then I just have another question, with all this work uh, going around wildland fire mitigation, I see that you are gonna be placing a grant after the CWPP is finalized in May for a dump trailer and some chainsaws. Is that, do we, do we have a chipper?
So, CMC has a little chipper and you know how, you know how reliable those are. Uh, that's why Commissioner Mudge talked about the air burner, we were, we were discussing that as an, as an option, because one of our biggest problems that we have is the, the massive amounts of slash and we haven't even started these, these kickoff, a lot of these programs yet, um, when it pertains to getting to our community members and getting out there and working with them to have proper mitigation, uh, the landfill is already full, so the air burn is one uh, idea and we're gonna see how that goes, if that goes through. And then we, we do want chipper, we do want a chipper of some kind, because it helps out uh, the community garden and it could help out uh, other community members with their um, with their gardening and so forth.
Yep.
We're, we're trying to come up with the solutions, the bigger piles, of course, those will be burned, um, but um, there is a, there is a concern about uh, the massive amount of slash that we will be contending with.
Yeah, I, I, if, if there is a chance to request a chipper, that could, you know, that could help, because you, you know as well as I do, you put slash in the back of a, a dump trailer, you're losing probably, I don't know, eighty percent efficiency with hauling, because the slash has so much porosity and if you're chipping, uh, it, you can get, you know, five times the amount of slash in the back of those things, and so I would, I would strongly encourage looking into more of an industrial, I know they're very expensive. However, I think a, a dump trailer pairs nicely with a chipper and.
It does, it does, I agree with you. Um, that does need to happen. Uh, we also looked into the big chippers that you would get, you know, like the kinds that grind up refrigerators, et cetera, to put at the landfill. We found out that that, that would be a maintenance nightmare for replacement. But uh, the, the grappling arm with the trailer is, there's programs that go along with that, but you're, you're right, we need to, in addition to that, uh, get some kind of chipping program as well, and we even worked with the state and the Forest Service, of course.
Yep, and, and then finally, has there been any discussions on, with the county about perhaps hiring a wildland fire mitigation coordinator? Uh, to, to, to kind of, I mean, it seems that what Commissioner Mudge talked before and what you're talking about now is almost a full-time job for somebody in the summer.
Yeah, yes, it is, I, I agree with that as well. Um, we have had some discussions, because I keep asking, um, we know the why, but we don't know the who. We don't know who's gonna be able to coordinate all of this and take on these uh, you know, these efforts, so I, I think it'll be an ongoing conversation and I think eventually that will, that will have to happen at some point.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, can you, do you have any updated timeline on the delivery of the Type Three?
I don't right now, last I heard though, Mayor, when we were out there for pre-con, uh, they said probably around July.
They keep sliding.
Yep, it's, it's like with everything else on, on the planet right, or not, you know, with the manufacturing and the delays and, and uh, you know, just stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Materials.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief, appreciate it.
Honey. Have a good night.
What's that?
Oh, I just said, have a, have a good evening.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next up, street department.
As far as January monthly report, we've been light on snow, forty hours of snow plowing. Did get seven hundred and eighteen hours of um, snow and ice removal. Eight hours uh, service on our equipment and twelve hours around police vehicles. Uh, you know, for the last couple of weeks, we've been trying to clear ice and snow. Um, you know, we haven't been having much snowfall on the whole thing, but you know, we've been clearing up and crossroads, which is getting pretty clear of ice, you know, um, slush, we've been talking about slush, which slush is uh, it's, we're not having a big problem with it, 'cause we've been cleaning up all the streets. As far as, we had a, some uh, drainage problems with the ice freezing over on Fourth Street is going into Harrison, we cleaned that up, Eleventh Street, we cleaned up the drainage by the realtor place by, between Family Dollar and the realtor place. So we've been clearing a lot of ice out of Main Street and side streets and up and downs, nine, or from twelfth to um, Front Street. Now, I know we talked about cleaning the sidewalk from uh, Ninth Street to Harrison. I've been trying to be on top of that every single day, um, just in case the ice is building up or C-Dot throws snow. We've been cleaning that up as well, so. But other than that, I think the street department's doing pretty good.
How's the snow dump?
Snow dump.
Capacity?
We're, if you look at our other two snow dumps, we're probably about fifty percent.
Good to know. Is that where you're gonna get the snow for ski joring out of the snow dumps?
No, so I've been talking to Ron um, from the school. He got the lower football field. Um, we can get snow from there and the county has been piling up snow as well, so we'll be getting snow from both places.
What about there at the Tabor, the park club behind the Tabor Opera House, there's a lot of snow piled up there, that's pretty, pretty.
You know, if we run, if we run out of places to get the snow, I'm sure we can pull it from there.
And you guys gonna start early Friday?
Um, Friday, we are gonna start at three o'clock in the morning, just to get trash and then after that, we'll start hauling snow with the county.
Okay, sounds great. Any questions for the street department? Please.
I just, we just got a question, we got a question from a resident about uh, slush from the second and tenth. And just, I, you explained a lot of slush removal. Specifically with those streets, how are they?
Um, as far as, you know, s- you said second.
Second and, and tenth.
Second and tenth.
I don't know the specific, in which blocks.
Yeah, so, you know, um, as far as those streets, I look for the most, you know, we'll start on one street, go from that street and then over, you know, when Tyler cuts ice, I gotta have, I gotta clear that street for them to open, so we, you know, Tyler jumps, you know, I have guys that jump around, but I'll get to it, you know. There's a lot of times I try to get to where we left off. So, I'll look into it and drive around tomorrow morning, we'll get it cleared, so, alrighty, thanks.
Any other questions for street department? Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, herbal shelter.
Thanks, Tom. Um, so, our animal pools has changed, as of today, we have three dogs, one is getting picked up at seven, so went back to the shelter after this. The puppy was adopted, two of the three cats were adopted, one new cat was surrendered on Sunday, so a total of two cats. At the shelter, we did apply for the license plate grant, so we bought a license plate for a shelter pet that was for a fund. Um, it was up to like one thousand and some change, so we applied for a thousand dollars for microchips, which would be two hundred microchips in total. So that way we could microchip all the adoptable animals at the shelter, as well as community animals when they come in, if they're not microchipped. Um, that we would probably charge around ten dollars for. The vets, they're in from forty to ninety, um, and that ten dollars, and then go back to purchase more microchips, so we could continue the program. For our adoptable pets, we have hung up posters around town, so we'll have to go, we're hoping to get a volunteer to kind of man that, so when animals are adopted, they can go update them, but um, currently we're doing that once a week with staff. In March, we have an upcoming grant, it's for five to fifty thousand dollars for um, BIPOC and we're gonna use that to see if we can get twenty thousand to hire a bilingual person to work weekends. Um, currently we have Rida, she's normally on during the week, so that way we can still serve our Spanish-speaking population if they come in on weekends. Um, and again, that was five to fifty thousand, so we're shooting for twenty thousand to cover the cost of that full weekend person. And then for our January quick stats recap, um, we had seven animals surrendered in January, so that was down, last January, we had thirteen animals. Um, we actually had more adoptions this month, we had eight adoptions in total. Only nine animals were impounded, that was twenty-four in January for last year. Eight of those animals were returned to owner, one ended up being unclaimed straight, we had zero euthanasias, zero transfer in or out, zeros in fosters, and then two cats that were in foster, two dogs were adopted for the end of the month. Back here, I've added some new items um, to the spreadsheet that we use, so grants, so that way we have grants coming in, you all can see that. We had five hundred from the Animal Welfare Organization in Boulder, and we had three using that to purchase um, some cat under beds, so we can have cat towers, which is not properly disinfected for the state, so we have to have the PBC types, so we know our deaths. And we're going forward with more dog and pet material, and then the New Hill, Colorado, gave us one thousand dollars that was straight to the vet, so that way we have some extra money in our vet fund. Um, community donations, so we had a hundred dollars donated to Grateful Cause, so that's a credit in our account, so we can go make things up. We have a hundred dollars, four dollars and thirty cents donated to the Let Go Vet Clinic, and then Mountain Dogs, we had a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And we did use ninety-nine that, um, to the doctor had some food allergies that had to have this. And we got a pet treats for our pet program. And then also new, I included at the end here, the expenses, so that way it shows the um, budget item, what's budgeted for is in parentheses, and then what we spent for the month. We have supplies, we had four beers, gas and oil, which John and I will get together so that we can get a gas card, so we're not paying at the gas stations. And our memberships, so our pack of membership for the year was four hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-nine cents. And then for our total animal expenses, it was nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-six cents this month.
This is a nice report, thank you. Any questions for the animal shelter, please?
One little thing, could you update the year to twenty twenty-two?
So the twenty twenty-one totals reflect the previous totals, um, where it says total on it, well, that's for this year, but yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you mean at the top.
Well, wherever it's appropriate, it's a little confusing.
Any other questions for the animal shelter? Thank you, Cameron, nice work. Okay, next up, building department, no, sales tax comparisons. We don't have a report from the building department. Dawn, any thoughts on maybe the financials, whether the taxes are way up again?
Yeah, taxes and. Um, I tried to make the notes at the bottom, but yes, we've talked about taking the marijuana tax out of this chart, so this is just um, sales tax and the, the tax that they bring in on motor vehicles. So hopefully, those, those numbers will match, but then, then again, this amount here was collected by the county in December for November numbers, so.
For November?
I'm assuming.
So the January numbers are November sales tax?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's good to be clarified, 'cause we're always kind of wondering, you know, what's the lag?
Yeah, yeah, it's amazing that the day I receive the check from the, the county is the day I get the email from Crystal saying this is what was collected, and it's like, oh, no, it wasn't. That, that doesn't, doesn't match, so, yeah, then I kind of, with Tracy, you know, we kind of figured out what's going on.
You forwarded all Tracy's calculations to us as well.
I, I um, forward her all those summary spreadsheets, if anybody wants to copy. Talk to Donna. I forward them as soon as you, I have been since that one time, so yes. Yeah, they should be getting them, hopefully.
And we have the financials, Donna and I always, you know, in January, there's not much, you can't do any, any sort of comparison. Well, I've looked, looked them over, I didn't see anything problematic in the financials, but if anybody has any questions, please do ask. You know, I keep thinking, these sales taxes have to level off. And for the fourth year in a row, I'm wrong. Um, and I just, I honestly don't know what to expect into the future through twenty twenty-two.
Always expect they will plot.
Yeah, I thought, that is my expectation, but they just, they refuse to, to obey. Okay, next up, we have the bills. Well, we're gonna, uh, Dana's still looking at financials, so we'll.
Oh, no, it's just a matter of how fast I can turn pages.
Uh, we have the bills. Any questions about any of the bills? Mostly just insurance payments. You can see that some of the uh, organizations that we uh, help fund have billed us. You can see the EV charging station, we paid for it, and now we have to collect the grant. And as you know, uh, the grant was thirty-five thousand dollars against the forty-three thousand dollar cost of the, of the station itself. Any questions about the bills? If not, I would entertain a motion, please.
Lorette, I'm going to pay the bills.
Third seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, all were in favor. Okay, next up, we have two temporary use permits. The first one up is Boom Days. Mr. Heidi, would you like to speak with us?
Yes, sir. After a two-year hiatus, we're very excited to get back to Boom Days again this year. So far, we've had overwhelmingly positive feedback from the entire community. First, just to great find a lot of whole classes of current beginning years. Before the event, so we're looking for the same whole event that we've had in the past, there may not be a couple new things, but we should have all of our regular bits. But the application should be complete, everything. Really, I'm just here to see if you guys have any questions we can answer to get this.
No, I looked at your, your detour plan, it looked very complete. Lori, any thoughts on this application?
Uh, no, we have had um. Comments from Lake County Rats and Lake County Building Land Use, they're going to be going through a permit with Lake County as well. Uh, from Lake County Fire and Rescue, we've had some comments that I've included in there. Again, none of them are any major concerns, just keeping the egress going and tents tied down. Don't really have anything to say, but they will be getting a county permit as well, we're working together.
Are there any questions for Mark?
I have an observation. Two years ago, um. We usually have a booth out there, it's a member of the Lake County Democrats. And two years ago, there were people, political groups from outside the county, who are very obnoxious. And one of them was raising money or taking petition to um. Something about the red flag law, and it was the day after a mass shooting in El Paso. And they were still out there saying, sign this, and is it necessary to have these outside political groups come in?
I can speak to that exactly, but I do know there were some people who did not offer us to be there in the past, that had set up groups, I think they were asked to leave. But we do screen everybody that applies, even non-profit groups do have to apply, tell us exactly what they're doing, provide pictures. Actually, if you go online, you can see it, we just set up for the first time ever, an online registration process for vendors. But they, and even not for profits, we do charge, the minimum for not for profits, we are charging a one hundred dollar booth fee. To be there, but I know I have heard that some groups will not authorize people to pass, so I wonder if that might be one of the reasons.
Okay.
Have you had that conversation with the Police Department?
Not yet, we have not had, we're just a little nervous application, we're waiting for feedback in the county, so we can address it. We haven't had, we've only had one movement.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions for Boom Days?
Mr. Heidi, thanks for doing it, I'm excited to see Boom Days back, I love it, and I'll be there. I love almost everything about Boom Days, the one thing I don't love is the gunfight reenactments. I can list a pretty long list of reasons why. And I'm wondering if they could be moved off Main Street to another venue, where people who specifically want to engage with that could. But the general public, whom I want to come to the parade, the food, the music, doesn't have to be part of that.
We actually, this has come up, and we've had numerous conversations about this, and just sensitivity to issues. As of now, the plan is, if gunfights are present in the parade, there won't be any gunfire. On the last whole event, we had people that just all of a sudden showed up that weren't part of our group, that started shooting guns at our gunfighters. So we're really making this clear with all the parade participants, that we know gunfight at the parade. We even talked about the possibility of moving to the stage up on East Fifth Street possibly. You know, we did in the past, the past couple of years, right, at times, there were specific times, there would be gunfighter events that were posted. We're really going to try to push that back and isolate that, so people know, and it is in a, you know, off Harrison Avenue, a specific place for the event. We have a lot of people that said we didn't want to give it up, because it is such an iconic part of our history, but we do want to be sensitive, and yeah, definitely are not going to have gunfire. As of this point on Harrison Avenue, if you guys want to make that a condition.
Well, I appreciate you having already thought that through, and I agree that I don't feel like it's something that has to go away, but just something that. Folks should be able to opt into if they want. And I, I would feel better about making that a stipulation in this permit. That, that there would not be any audible gunfire, and that, you know, it sounds like some folks who are not part of the sanctioned performance. Brought that in as well, and so that might be a good thing to discuss with Commissioner Edwards as well, as far as how to respond to that if it comes up. And I, you know, this. I don't want to micromanage it in this way, but I think it could be something worth advertising, I know people who specifically don't go because of that. Whether it's little kids, or it's a trigger for, for a traumatic stress response or something. And so I think, you know, putting that out there in, in the public could be helpful.
I would say this, the word audible is probably not going to work, because even if they do it on, on Fifth Street, you'll hear it. I mean, and those guns are loud, there's no, no question. I agree that it is, it is a. A very, I don't want to call it an important part of our history, but, but it was very prevalent during our Boom Days. You know, and this is a celebration of, of the, the mining years in, in the late eighteen hundreds, and, and the Western dress. So I, I, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to take it off of Harrison Avenue, but the audible part would work in terms of, the sound is going to be there.
And for what it's worth, too, we go from our announcer, the announcer, as time, you know, when before those events are going to take place.
Anybody else have any questions or suggestions for Boom Days?
You can make it. Just to, Councilmember Clark's point. Is it that you're trying to make it a condition that it's not part of the parade? Because you could do that, you could make it a condition is not part of the parade, and still be in alignment with their moving the. Audible gunfire away and off of Main Street, so I don't know if that accomplishes your goal.
My goal is that people downtown, who don't want to be exposed to gun violence, shouldn't have to be, with their ears, their eyes, or any other sensory experience. So if, if moving it to Fifth Street. Isn't going to achieve that, then I would propose maybe the rodeo grounds, or something that's further away. Because I, like I said, I think the, it's the audible part that's hard for a lot of people. Or the, you know, perhaps the. I don't know if this would take the luster out, but um, just not having the blank grounds, the silent reenactments.
Cisco, what do you think about the timed nature of, you know, like on East Fifth, we're going to have a gunfight on the stage at eleven?
Yeah.
So that. People have the flexibility to remove themselves.
What block, or which block of East Fifth?
Oh, right, the first block, we only have our permit to.
Yeah.
Up to the alley, the stage, yeah.
Yeah. For me, that's better than during, a lot better than during the parade, but, but doesn't really alleviate those greater concerns.
Well, I, I understand, Cisco, I understand and respect your, your view on this, I, I will disagree. Because I think it's an important part, not only our history, but, but Boom Days, you know, for all these years. It is, it has been something that a lot of people really enjoy, and I understand there are people who are going to object to it. But I don't know where you draw that line, and, and so I think we could draw the line at maybe not having an old Harrison Avenue. Maybe announcing the times where they're going to have three gunfights per day at eleven, one, and three, or something like that. And, and not having the guns actually shot during the parade, Mark, what do you think?
Yeah, I would just ask you to be specific about really just limiting the gunfire, because we do want, you know, all of our participants and people, you know, who volunteer all year, to be able to. March in the parade, you know, dressed up, maybe with, with the, you know, the gunfire's gun, but they wouldn't be unholstering it or shooting it.
I would, I would agree, thank you. Any other thoughts from City Council, based on what we've heard?
Well, I think, I mean, I think the compromise is in allowing individuals the flexibility to remove themselves, if they don't want to be exposed to it. I mean, if I. Do not want to revisit certain traumas, you know, I don't go to certain movies, I, I don't, you know, I choose to absent myself. But that doesn't mean that other people can't go and enjoy them.
Yeah, would it be, to move it to somewhere like the rodeo grounds, does that feel like too far off the main drag to be?
It really does, only because our whole event is so local, to Harrison Avenue, and our announcing stand, and everything else. We had talked in the past about having some other events there, but it's, I mean, that's a trap.
Yeah.
And to get people down there for just, you know.
Yeah.
A little bit to watch one whole event, it doesn't really make a lot of sense for us.
Councilmember for Gentry.
City Council, sorry.
Councilmember for Gentry.
Uh, Max, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Cisco, thank you for bringing this topic up when it comes to Boom Days, really think it's a, a good position to hold. I am agreement, there's probably some middle ground here, right now, and seeing how that works. For this year, we can always revisit this, we could also, instead of having a three-year permit, we could have a one-year permit. So we can revisit this, and, and see if it works to have it on a stage off of Harrison. At designated times, and, and making sure that those, those times are. Prevalent throughout the venue and the event. I, I personally do not like, I mean, when, the times that I've been in Boom Days, to all of a sudden have Harrison clear. With my kids in front of it, and, and having a, like a reenactment, it's kind of good, but I'll tell you, my kids didn't really like it. And, and those are just a, a personal point, so I'm, I understand where you're coming from. But I just think, I'm wondering if there's a way to, to strike a middle ground, and see if that alleviates some of the concerns. And to Dana's point, that, that those who want to, to attend can, and those who don't can self-select not to.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, Tim?
I would take the position with Dana and Max. That we come to some middle ground on it, still have it a part of the event, but take it off of Harrison Avenue, put it on a stage. Regular times, so those that want to. Want to see that kind of stuff, and want to participate in it, still can. It's always been a part of the event, so I think if we can start to compromise in some way, that that would be a good thing.
Thank you, Christian?
Uh, just based off what I heard, apologies for being a bit late, a little. I would agree that a compromise sounds pretty good, it seems like it'd be a little bit too difficult to move it too far out of the way. I do totally understand the concerns, though, and maybe if we. See how the compromise goes this year, see if that's adequate enough, maybe have a couple of announcements beforehand, just making very clear what's going on. If that doesn't seem like it's enough, then we can definitely revisit it, and I do like the idea of maybe this year it's a one-year permit rather than a three-year permit.
I, I don't think we were considered a three-year permit.
Applicant didn't request a three-year permit.
Tracy.
Yeah, I liked Max, it's come for months, I would agree with that.
Good, thank you. Cisco, are you going to be okay with that?
Um, I don't love it, but I'm willing to, to go with it this year. I would say I don't think this is an important part of our history to celebrate or lift up, I think there's lots of things we used to do. That we don't, with good reason, and there's no reason to celebrate it. We're, we're celebrating murder by firearm, and I grew up reading Louis Lamour books, watching westerns, I mean, I get the romanticism of it. But A, it's false, there actually wasn't much of it, and B. Killing people with firearms is not a thing of the past. Maybe dressing up like a cowboy and doing it is, but twenty-one thousand people were killed by gun violence last year. I don't think this is something we should celebrate. I know that some people like it, and, and I don't want to. Necessarily take that away from their experience, if that's what they want to be part of it. But I'm willing to support this compromise this year. But I think it's something we should really think hard about, like, we're, we're lifting this up in our community and saying, hey, everybody, look at this. And that doesn't feel great to me, it hasn't felt great to me for a bunch of years. I don't know how to explain it to my kids, when they ask me why it's okay for those people out there to point their guns at each other and shoot them. I don't have a good answer for them. So I'd invite us all to think about that going into next year as well.
Thank you, Cisco. Any other questions or concerns? I would entertain a motion on the temporary use permit for Boom Days. Uh, with the caveats that we have discussed. Who's willing to give that a try?
Lorette, some moves to prevent temporary use permit for Boom Days, Inc., to host Level's Boom Days Friday, August fifth, twenty twenty-two, through Sunday, August seventh. Twenty twenty-two, from twelve PM until six PM daily. Approval includes a requisite city services, as well as. I want to use my husband's afternoon. Call it Lucifer. Fire department requirements, on the condition that. All um. Firearms is banned from the parade, and any firearm reenactments take place on stage on Fifth Street with appropriate notice.
Tracy, would you, would you accept a correction, because it wasn't firearms in the parade, it was the discharge of firearms.
Discharge of firearms.
Okay.
No, sir.
So any other discussion? Thank you all very much, roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember for Gentry.
Councilmember for Gentry.
We'll come back to it.
Mayor Pro Tim Green, yes. Councilmember Luna Leo?
Yes.
Mayor Lavi?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorette.
Yeah.
Check with Max one more time.
Councilmember for Gentry. Can you hear us?
Yes, I had to go to the bathroom, yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Mark, thanks for all you're doing, this is a big deal, alright. Next up, we have temporary use permit for the. Next up, we have a temporary use permit for the flaming foliage relay. Um, do we have a representative, um?
I believe so.
Okay.
Thought maybe we did, but I don't think so, no.
He usually does come, uh, and present to us. On the other hand, he's done the same thing every year for probably seven, eight years. They come through kind of during the night. On the middle of trail, they use the high school as a, as a checkpoint and then all the way to Beunice.
And as you all know, he's extremely organized, has a COVID plan, has plenty of, he's extremely experienced in this, to say the least. Very little impact to the community at all.
That's.
Very little impact to the community.
This is one event that I never even noticed.
I don't. I can't stay up till ten o'clock. Any questions or concerns? If not, I would, uh, entertain a motion, please.
No moves to approve temporary use permit for Timberline Events LLC to host flaming foliage relay Friday, September ninth, twenty twenty-two, from nine PM until six AM, Saturday, September tenth, twenty twenty-two. Set approval being good for three years or through twenty twenty-four.
I have a second.
Five seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yep.
Councilmember Phil.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Yes.
Councilmember for Gentry?
Yes.
Councilmember Thar?
Yes.
Lori, will you notify Paul?
Yes.
Good thinking. Okay, we'll add some ordinances. Um. Oh, this is second reading, the ordinance number one. Okay. Uh, in which case, I, I don't have the script in front of me, uh, but, uh, this is second reading, so it will be a public hearing. Um, we'll go through our process. Uh, we'll ask the, um, in this case, staff, but that would be a, a Christiana. But, uh, I told her I didn't think it was necessary for her to present tonight. Um. So at this time, uh, we opened the public hearing, uh, for agenda item number nine A. This is for ordinance number one, series of twenty twenty-two, and ordinance amending various sections of Leadville Municipal Code to remove specific fees for the Leadville Lake County Animal Shelter and authorizing animal shelter fees to be set by resolution. Uh, and this is second reading. Um, any input from staff on this?
It was published appropriately in the newspaper after first reading and nothing has changed and nothing has been added to it or anything like that.
Right, thank you. My, um. Uh, so at this time then, I would ask, uh, we're gonna open the, uh, public comments, uh, portion of this public hearing. I would ask if anybody in the public would like to, to speak in favor of this ordinance. Hearing none, I would like to ask if anybody would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance. Still none, then I would entertain a motion to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Phil moves to close the public input portion of the public meeting.
Three seconds.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. Uh, this time we're in deliberation. Um, and of course, this is, we're gonna follow this up with a resolution on the fees themselves. Um, so if there's not any discussion.
Then when will we be during those resolutions?
Next.
That's, oh, that's part of this meeting, yes, gotcha.
Uh, establishing the actual fees themselves by resolution instead of by ordinance. And does everybody understand why we're doing this? When the ordinance was written, they put the fees in ordinance, which they should never do, but they did, so we're taking care of that. Thank you. Uh, I would entertain a motion, please.
Councilmember for Gentry moves to adopt ordinance number one, series of twenty twenty-two. Ordinance amending various sections of the Leadville Municipal Code to remove specific fees to Leadville Lake County Animal Shelter and authorizing animal shelter fees to be set by resolution on second reading.
Councilmember Luna Led, seconds.
Thank you very much. Um, we have a motion in the second. I, in, in, in terms of discussion, I would say this, this ordinance, uh, actually takes effect thirty days after second read. Just so we remember how that works. Um, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thar?
Yes.
Councilmember for Gentry?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo?
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil?
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson?
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have resolution number nine. This is resolution, uh, amending the city's fee schedule uh, to adopt fees for the Leadville Animal, Lake, Leadville Lake County Animal Shelter.
So Mayor, Mayor, do, do we need to put this off for thirty years?
Put up.
Naturally, yeah, no. The ordinance takes effect now?
No, not according to Christiana.
Okay. No, just making sure.
I didn't take her wish, everything. Just saying. Anybody have any comments on the fees themselves? These have all, uh, been worked by Caitlin at the animal shelter. Uh, and, uh, they match the county's fees, which is, which has been a big deal in terms of that our fees, the county's fees didn't match.
So if the animal came from the county, not the city, they?
It was a different, it was a different charge. If there are no questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion, please.
I actually.
Oh, please.
I'm sorry.
That's good.
Um. As far as the surrender fees go, I don't know how that works. If somebody can't keep their animal because maybe they can't afford it. Now we're gonna charge them to surrender that animal? And if they don't have the money, aren't they just gonna throw it out on the street or something?
It's a good question. Uh, I think people, well, I should, I'm, I'm gonna make an assumption. Most people who are gonna surrender their animal want to do so as humanely and, as they possibly can. And so, um, for, for whatever reason, it's being surrendered. Maybe it's an older person who can't take care of it anymore. A family who can't feed it, or, you know, I don't know. Um, I don't know that that's been an issue in the past, except it could be an issue we don't even know exists. So I'm not sure how to, how to answer that.
Can we put something in there that says per discretion of, uh, animal shelter?
You know, uh, that's a great point. Uh, I actually give, uh, the animal shelter discretion on almost everything. Uh, but I think putting in discretion of the animal shelter in that particular case would be a really good addition.
I think Councilmember for Gentry has their hand.
Max, go ahead.
Yeah, I had the same, same question that Councilmember Loretson had. And is that surrender fee codified or in the county fees as well? Is that, is that similar? And that's a question I have.
It was, it was a goal to align them. I'm not sure, but we can, I can take that to Caitlin. If, if, if we change it and they're not aligned, we could ask the county to align them, uh, because we're in a position to do that now.
And, and I just think that's to, to the Councilmember Loretson's point, it's kind of insulting injury to ask somebody, like pay a fee to surrender their animal. Um, especially considering we're gonna get adoption fees on the other end. Um, and so it's like almost double dipping for one animal. So I'm, I'm, I'm curious if, how other council members feel and, uh, if we can change that language for, for the, uh, for the surrender.
Uh, Max, would you, would you be in favor of, of adding the language at the discretion of the animal shelter manager?
I, I'm, I get wrapped up around being fair and equitable. I know that, um, Caitlin and her staff would make the appropriate calls. I'm just, I, that said though, I, I, I'd like to hear from other council members to see their feelings about the surrender feel, feeling. I'm glad we're having this discussion though.
Good, thank you. Uh, let's hear from other council members. I'll, Tim, I'll call on you first. Oh, sorry.
I was gonna say, I think it's a good question. I guess my concern is, are we, are we, are we thinking of a problem that doesn't exist? Like, I would like to hear from the animal shelter people what their experience has been. Um, and if it has been an issue, then address it. And if it, like, when people bring an animal in and they're told, here's this fee to surrender it, what kind of responses do they get?
If you don't mind, I'll call Caitlin once. She said she was going back to the animal shelter. Let's see if she's still there. We're not gonna get her. I'll, I'll try the other number, that is the animal shelter number. Give it a second. Okay. Uh, I would suggest in light of the questions and, and wanted to hear from Caitlin, uh, that maybe we do not make this decision tonight. Um, we could table it for further discussion with, with City Council's permission.
I would agree. I think that it's definitely odd to, um, as Max said, double dip on one pet. Uh, charging them one way in and one way out does seem a bit, um, excessive. But I do also know that there is a lot of, you know, maintenance costs that comes to taking care of dogs. So maybe there is a need for that double dipping, um, per se. So I definitely think that this should be, we should definitely wait until we have, like, someone knows what we're talking about.
Well, let's ask Caitlin to speak to, we'll put this on the next City Council agenda and ask Caitlin to come speak to us on this topic. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep. Yeah, the only thing I would say too is that there are costs involved in taking animals in, so.
Well, definitely.
Especially if they're not spayed or neutered or vaccinated, have proper vaccination, stuff like that, so. I mean, I don't, I don't see it as being egregious to charge someone to surrender their animal.
I think the question will be, does she think it's a, it, it, it keeps people from surrendering their animal, or do they just turn them loose in the neighborhood?
But yes, I do, I do agree on table and, and getting Caitlin involved in the discussion, for sure.
Lori, would you, uh, reschedule this for, um, for March first?
Yes.
In fact, I would, uh, I would like a motion to that effect.
Agreed moves to postpone, um, discussion and adoption of resolution number nine, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution amending the city's fee schedule to adopt fees for Leadville Lake County Animal Shelter until our regular meeting on March first. Loretson, second.
Any other discussion? In this case, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next up, resolution number ten, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution of the City of Leadville designating authorized signatures on the city's bank account and for the safe deposit box. Um, Donna, put this together. Any thoughts on this, Donna?
I did change the resolution a little bit so that it, it's titles, not specific names. So that every time we change as the signers, we don't actually have to go with a resolution because it's already titled, not named.
I love the idea that we'll, we'll bank accept that.
No. But I will see the bank tomorrow, if you guys are okay with this.
I, I guess I don't know if it's even, you and I kind of discussed it and, uh, I just wasn't sure if the bank was gonna be okay with titles.
No, I'll have to go with specific names.
Oh, you will.
To the bank, but it'll save us from having to do the resolution every time to change it.
Name against that title.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, the bank want na- wants names.
Okay. Any other, other thoughts? In which case, I would entertain a motion, please.
You're not on here.
No, I can't be on there. The auditors would say, no, no.
Okay.
Too much control.
Okay, Loretson moves to adopt City Leadville, Colorado Resolution ten, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution of the City of Leadville, Colorado designating authorized signatories on the city's bank accounts for the safe deposit deposit box.
Member Led, seconds.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I ask one question?
You can, we're in discussion now.
Oh, thank you. Um, so this is saying the ma- mayor singularly could, or?
No, it, it should say the mayor or mayor pro tem and, so it's either the mayor or mayor pro tem as one signature, and then the others could be the second signature. So there should be an and between mayor and the next.
Well, between mayor.
The city administrator.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, I like that. I didn't quite get that clarity from that, um, formatting. Do others?
I know, it looks a lot like antibiotic regimens and all that. They're displayed, so I'm okay with it.
Okay. Um, I mean, if, if this suffices to meet that goal, I'm fine with it. I just, okay.
Any other observations? Lori, you have anything?
No.
You seem to have that quizzical look on your face, so, okay. Uh, we have a, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Loretson?
Yep.
Councilmember Phil?
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Yes.
Councilmember for Gentry?
Yes.
Councilmember Thar?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the public meetings planner. We have February, it looks like February and March.
Oh, the meeting's on the seventeenth, where is that here?
No, it's in, uh, room seven oh one, which is the room where they have community coffee behind the cafeteria. So the, it's in the cafeteria building.
At CMC.
It's, it's, sorry.
Did everyone get that invitation where you could, okay, good. Go ahead, Councilmember for Gentry.
Yeah, Mayor, this is Councilmember for Gentry, just letting you know, I will be unable to.
Yeah, mayor, this is councilmember Fregenti. Just letting you know, I will be unable to attend that meeting due to conditions as present.
Okay, sorry to hear it.
Max, when are you out of isolation?
Let me say day five is the eighteenth.
Are we still having a work session on the twenty, or special meeting on the twenty-second about parking?
Uh, yes, we just have it as a work session right now. I don't know that we have it posted as a special meeting. Do you think it should be? Cause we could post it as a special meeting if you'd like.
I'm fine with the work session.
Okay.
I'll get that on the calendar. I see that it's not.
Thank you. The P and Z meeting on the twenty-third, I think, has been canceled.
It has been. I, I will take care of that as well. Sorry.
Okay, any other comments on the planner?
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, Max.
Yes, sir. Uh, I, I, not necessarily a new meeting, but for your awareness, uh, I will be going in front of the Board of County Commissioners at their, I believe it's the regular scheduled meeting at one PM on the twenty-third, uh, to discuss, um, coming up with some sort of, um, trail coalition. Um, I don't know exactly what i- it's gonna be, but this is specifically in regard to east side, but other, um, issues as they arise in the future. And so I just wanted you to know that I'll be going there and just getting a sense on, on what the, the recreation, uh, I guess there's a, a council uh, and, and where this may intersect, or if there's any, any, uh, interest in siding something. And, and the intent would be is to have a representation at the table at this trails coalition from ultimately every user group, uh, winter or summer that use roads or trails uh, with a facilitator that is, uh, not, uh, is, is truly a facilitator. No, no sides taken. And.
Hey, Max, quick question. You know, there is a trails coalition that exists, uh, that Sterling, uh, hosts each month. Uh, have you spoken with, with, uh, Sterling about using that already, you know, kind of assembled multi-user trail coalition as a starting point?
Well, that's the issue is I feel that as much as I'm a non-motorized user, having a non-motorized user that, that is truly the executive de- the director of Cloud City Wheelers is not necessarily, um, um, as much as he may be, um, you know, not taking sides, I feel that we truly need representation from every single organization. And I bring this up because this is exactly what happened, uh, when I lived in Moab is it was actually a lot worse, uh, back in the early two thousands where there were starting to become uh, massive conflicts between user groups. And they decided as a county to bring in this, this idea, um, for the Grand County Trails Mix is what they're called. And, and truly have a facilitator, um, that does not, that, that seems not to take a side. And I feel, um, there's a lot of misunderstanding between both the motorized and the non-motorized community at the east side. I know everybody has a strong opinion about what that looks like on the east side. Um, and I'm truly trying to come up with a plan or, or at least have a discussion of, yeah, maybe having that trails coalition that's started. However, not having it in a Cloud City Wheelers, um, cloak, if you will.
Thank you. That makes, that makes perfect sense. I appreciate that. And I appreciate you being involved. I would tell you, uh, is, is that one o'clock on the twenty-third, which is a Wednesday?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I would tell you, uh, I've had, uh, Stay the Trail has reached out to me. I reached out to them several months ago. They are very interested in coming up and being instrumental in the educational, uh, component of our issues, uh, this summer. So, um, keep that in mind and I'll be glad to, uh, to let everybody know what, what that might look like in, and if it's what, if it's something that we want.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, anybody else? All right, moving on. I have a couple of things with the mayor's report that I, I really need to discuss. Uh, first of all, the, the, the parking, uh, we have the one lot, it's under contract. Uh, that's, that's a lot behind Western Hardware. And the closing date of that will be March the eighteenth. And I got the title war yesterday, I think. Um, next, we, we were talking about a couple of the lots and one was the lot that community banks owned, owns. So they came back to me and said, the, the guy that I've been dealing with said he had gone to, to his manager and, and they said, we really don't want to sell that lot, but we would be interested in a land lease on that lot. And I said, thank you. So I, I have, he and I talked about some parameters for that. Uh, whether it's a one-year renewable and Lori had just suggested maybe we should be a little more aggressive than that. And so we'll work on that. Uh, maybe a ten-year lease that, that gives them an out in those ten years if, if they need it for whatever reason. Um, I won't get into all the details, but I, I'm really tickled with that. Uh, we would, then we would have to probably improve that lot somehow. Maybe not pave it, maybe road a mill and and roll it and then signage. Uh, but that looks very good. In the meantime, the Lifetime Fitness Lot, I've been talking with Lifetime Fitness, uh, that's in the works. I, I don't know where we are on that right this second. There's been some pushback, uh, from, from corporate. Uh, but Tamara is, you know, sh- she would like to see that happen for us. And so I'm hoping that we have a positive outcome there. Uh, also, uh, talking to Mallory Baker about the contract for her putting together a parking permit program uh, with Walker Consultants. And they're the ones who did the, the study, the downtown study for us, the parking, uh, feasibility study. And, uh, she has sent me a contract, uh, uh, Lori has looked at it, uh, we'll let Christiana have a look at it. I would like to put it under contract uh, sooner rather than later, i- if nobody has a big objection. And then we, we would, we would, you know, put that contract in resolution. Any questions about that as a possibility? It's a twenty-seven thousand dollar contract, incidentally. It is what they quoted.
I'm not crazy about their reports, so I'm not excited to put them under contract.
Anybody else?
And this is a contract to put together a plan?
A, a plan, an implementation plan and with some, uh, um, options that we would consider in terms of a neighborhood permitting process. Uh, and we, you know, you know, I asked her, I, okay, I, I wanna, I want a, I want a plan that we can actually get our hands around about, you know, where do the, where do the permits come from? Are they, are they window stickers or the hang tags? You know, tell us about enforcement, how that would take place, those sorts of things.
Would we get to review that before we go to resolution?
I could, I could do that. I could, I could have that.
I'd rather not like have a resolution in front of me and then.
I, I would agree with that. So, uh, let's take a deep breath. I'll have that for you on the March first. So that you could have a look at it and it'll be in the packet beforehand.
And so you'll have the, their, their proposed plan?
Yes, well, no. Develop for us. I'll have the contract.
Contract.
That, that, uh, the contracts that to build up for us.
Yeah. I do think it's, it's important for us to be able to tell residents who are, who are gonna miss this private parking program that we are making moves on something. Are, uh, it sounds like councilmember Loretson has hesitancy about that particular company.
Well, they're the ones who suggest that we charge our residents for parking permits.
Yeah.
They're still suggesting that and, and Lauren actually has agreed with that because of her, her experience in Moab. Is that correct?
Uh, no, not, not Moab, just general experience. I think, uh, my feeling is that if you set up a program that runs in a deficit, that's not good fiscal responsibility for the city. So I would, you know, I wanna see what they would propose. And I think this is all part of the discussion. But I don't know that it's a program that the city should establish where the permit doesn't even cover the cost of the administration for the city to issue the permit. So I, I would think it, it, it's something that you will think about as this gets debated. But I do think it's not a good idea to run a city program at the outset in a deficit. So if you didn't charge anything, then there's an administrative cost to however the program is set up. So let's say it's, uh, you know, the most common thing is a paper hang, hang tag if you're, you know, if you have a guest or something. So the, the cost of printing that and making that available and staff time. So what I, I would suggest, it's probably prudent to think about what, you know, covering the cost of that. Uh, but you can decide not, not to do that. It's just, remember if you want to expand the program at some point later, let's say you do a permit program for just a couple blocks, but it, it works really well. And then other parts of the city would like to do that, but now you're not charging for it and you increase the amount of time and effort. And, and so it's just something to consider. I think it's, it's good to think about covering the costs of whatever this program is. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there, um, well, are there other companies that you, that anybody knows of that we could also look at? Or is it, is it totally out of the realm of possibility to draft a proposal in-house?
Yes. Who's gonna do that?
Thank, thank you, Trudy.
Actually, I think you, I think you made, you said is, is it totally out of the realm of possibility? I think your answer should have been yes.
Oh, yeah.
Y- yeah, I, I, I think the mayor and I talked about it, uh, a little bit. Not, I, I really don't think we have the expertise.
Okay.
Here's the other.
Or the time.
Considerations in tur- in terms of talking to Walter Consultants is they've already done all the debt acquisition. And that there's not a cost to that. In fact, she originally had that in, in the bid. And I said that there'll be duplication of effort. She agreed, you know, and that was not necessary. So that's, that's, but that, that'll be a conversation.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, that's why I think we should have paid perky and on here it's in to pay for the permit program for our, let the tourists pay for our permit program, of my.
I quite honestly agree with that. I, I can't imagine how that would go over well to tell people, hey, pay for parking now. Like, not only did we remove your, you know, private parking, but now you have to pay for it as well. I, I, I just don't see why that would make any sense. On top of that, I feel like it's totally okay to run a program at a deficit. The government is here to provide a service for the people, uh, not a detriment. And I feel like most people would just see it as a detriment rather than a service, you know, whether it's appropriately viewed as that or not. You know, I don't think that's something that is really considered when it feels more like a, like you're just paying for nothing, basically.
We ultimately will get to decide, you know, how the program rolls out. Uh, we'll, we'll get recommendations. And then, then we'll, we'll, you know, take the recommendations that are given to us and decide what, what is the program we're comfortable with. Okay. March first is starting to stack up. Sorry. Well, then we won't start till seven.
Yeah, I won't be back till like seven.
Okay, we'll start.
Nice job making moves on parking.
I'm gonna have a thing or two to say.
Okay, good.
Are you gonna feed us between the training and, uh, city council meeting?
What is that? I'm sorry.
On the first, we have training with Christiania, man. Are you gonna feed us?
It is true, training at four o'clock. Uh, yes, the answer is, that is a great suggestion. Ms. Ty, what do you think?
Yep, please.
Unless you want me to be even more ordinary.
That's, that is a wonderful suggestion. I love it. Thank you. High mountain pies? Okay. Uh, the next thing I have is a little more complicated. I'll try not to take too much time on it, but, uh, I, I don't know which way this is gonna go. I got a call, uh, yesterday morning. Uh, Mondays are always, there's always this surprise thing that happens on Monday mornings. I don't know why that is, but it always happens. So, uh, this Monday, it was a big surprise and Carol Bellhaus called me. She has been, uh, engaged as the attorney, uh, for Neil Reynolds estate. For those of you who may not know Neil Reynolds' die.
Oh, no.
He died about a month ago. Anyway, uh, and she said something very interesting, which we'd heard before and Chris Floyd is, is still with us. Uh, she said, boy, he was really helping himself to the Boas estate, wasn't he? That's, that was one of the first things Carol said. Uh, and I said, we, we were aware of that. Uh, well, here's, here's the, here's the, uh, the twist in all of this. The Boas estate in the will and a codicil to the will gave the house with the eye, uh, to Neil Reynolds. He never put it in his name. He never put it in his name. So now the question will be, does Neil Reynolds' estate have the right to put it in the estate now? Or is it now part of the Boas estate because he never transferred? Uh, he never took title. Well, that, that would be my option. So the next thing is regardless of which, which estate it ends up in, uh, is there a possibility that it would be sold on the marketplace that we would lose that house and everything in it? And so what Carol and I talked about was there a way to, if it's in the Boas estate, would the both, would the heirs, heirs to the Boas estate be willing to either give it or sell it to the city of Leadville? Because I don't know how else we can get this done. I don't wanna lose that, that place. Uh, it is. Yeah, please do.
Me too.
A percentage of the Boas estate goes to the animal shelter. And that's why we have a.
Chris, go ahead.
Sorry, my, my thing when working to unmute. Yes, thank you, mayor. And that's, that's kinda why I was hanging out uh, enjoying y'all's meeting tonight was in case the opportunity came up to talk about this. I also spoke to Carol Bellhaus this afternoon and I'm in agreement with, um, a proposal that, that she has made for the city to, you know, for whichever estate ends up owning the property to e- essentially donate it to the city um, for conservation purposes. And I'm, I'm in agreement with that proposal. My challenge is, as some of you may recall, I was pro bono counsel to the chamber of commerce on that matter. And I've reached out to their leadership, um, with the recommendation that they also uh, accept the proposal, um, if it in fact stays in the Boas estate. If for no other reason than if there is a contest as to who owns the house and whether it be sold and all of that kinda stuff. It's likely that the beneficiaries of the estate would spend more money in contesting it than they would get out of the, the process. So um, I'm in support of it, but unfortunately, right now, I don't know what, uh, my, I guess, technical client, the chamber is going to say.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, it, it's, it's tricky. So I'll keep you informed. Um, it, no matter what happens, even if they give us the house, it's a liability to the city. And there's a cost to running it, although we do that with the Tabor home and we can do it with the House with the Eye. Um, I don't know if there's deferred maintenance. I, there's a lot I don't know about this. And, uh, but, but I would, I would like to say that, oh, I don't, if, if anybody has been in the House of the Eye, it's actually my favorite museum in, in Leadville. And we've got great museums. That place is wonderful. So that's enough for me. Any questions? Uh, be glad to answer to the best of my ability. Okay, next up, council reports. What's happening? Cisco, God, do you think?
We might finally have another lead teacher at Bright Start.
Oh, okay.
Which would allow us to expand to. We have eight, eight kids there in care right now and there, there's a 14 kid waitlist. The only constraint being hiring more staff, but we might have finally found somebody. But we are working with Build a Generation. They started a, they got a grant to help create better professional pathways from high school to college to early childhood professions. So that's a long-term win, but it won't, won't help us in the next year or so. I guess it, it could help a little bit, but. Things are still kind of desperate there is as far as having the right amount of staff to serve the community demand. But hopefully we're getting there.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Council reports. Tracy.
Well, as you all know, it's an election year and the kickoff is the caucus, which is taking place for the Democrats on March 4th. The night of Lasky touring at the high school. Registration at five o'clock and it'll start at six. So if you're a registered Democrat, I hope to see you there.
I'll be meeting with Noah Soons from BAG to discuss more about the cost of living here in Leadville and in Lake County. So we can get a better idea of what should be the minimum wage when that comes around. So expect updates.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. With that in mind, it is 7:55, not exactly 6:45, but 7:55. Oh, Tracy, I'm sorry. Huh?
I wouldn't bet.
Oh. Do you really? What was your guess?
That you wouldn't end at 6:41.
That was, that was a tough guess. This city council is a juror.
Is that the community thanks spot?
Jamie Safer.
It's like there.